Let's call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda, we'll just quickly observe a moment of silence before we start. Okay, now stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Don't move, Kathy Schutte.
Oh, excuse me, roll call first.
Kinney.
Here.
Orpman is excused, Frannick. Liz Frannick. Houfal.
Here.
Stendor.
Here.
Jennings. Dylan Jennings.
Burling.
Here.
Corporala.
Here.
Mika. Vitek.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Hannanen.
Here.
Weiner. John Weiner. Schutte.
Here.
Murdig.
Yeah.
Negro.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Quebec.
Here.
Metzener excused. Campbell.
Here.
Okay, we're ready now. Need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I made the motion, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Do the motion.
Right, we, actually, I was gonna ask one of the supervisors to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow the town of La Pointe to answer questions and speak during their agenda item. So somebody can.
This is Pat, it looks like Supervisor Vitek was going to second the motion to approve the agenda. And then, this is Pat Kinney, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules during the regular part of the agenda to allow representatives from the town of La Pointe to speak.
I'll second that, this is Supervisor Quebec.
All right. You have to vote on that. Have a motion in a second, that wasn't fair, say aye.
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 Motion in a second, are we dealing with?
The first motion was to suspend the rules to allow representatives from the town of La Pointe to speak, and now we would need to approve the agenda as amended.
Then I'll make the motion to approve it as amended.
Do we have a second? Motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we're going to the public comment period. I, there are probably more people than this that want to speak, I only have one person that signed up. Mel Ashbacher, I don't know if I said that right or not.
Good morning, my name is Sergeant Mel Ashbacher and I'm a sergeant in the Ashland County Jail. I'd like to take a few minutes of your time and discuss the pay increases for correctional officers. First, any pay raise given to the jail should be given to all correctional officers from new hires to sergeants. All jailers from new hires to sergeants do the same duties. Obviously, a sergeant would have more responsibility, but he or she still performs the same duties as a new hire. If you were to give new hires and COs with less than five years' employment the pay raise and no other CO, this would mean a new hire would be making more than a sergeant. Which would not make any sense. I think it would be detrimental to the correctional officers and would cause the jail more harm than good, most likely you would lose employees. The direct opposite of what you're trying to accomplish. In this day and age, a correctional officer has to deal with COVID, medical issues, psychological issues, depressed inmates, be able to break up an altercation between inmates, and protect ourselves from harm, just to name a few duties and responsibilities we deal with on a daily basis. Our job is demanding and stressful, and we have to be prepared for the unexpected and deal with it appropriately. Our profession is one where very few understand or know what we do, and dependable employees are hard to find. It takes a special person to be a correctional officer and deal with any number of problems or issues on a daily basis. This is why it's so critical that we receive a pay raise, not the token 2%, but something more. This would go a long way in showing the correctional officers that we are appreciated. It would increase the chances of individuals applying to work in the jail, and it would increase the likelihood that senior correctional officers would stay employed with Ashland County. In closing, I'd like to ask you to take all of these duties and responsibilities of correctional officers into consideration when deciding on a pay increase for the jail staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on the public comment period? Anyone else? Last call, anyone else want to speak on the public comment period? All right, we're gonna close the public comment period. Next to you on the agenda is Dee, presentation COVID update by Liz Zott. She's not here, obviously.
I'm here.
Physically here.
No, not physically here. We actually have a COVID-19 vaccine clinic today, so I am in the process of drawing vaccine at this precise moment. So that is, that is part of our update with the vaccinations that we are continuing to do. We have a walk-in clinic today, and we are resuming our every three-week walk-in clinic schedule where we will be providing Pfizer, Moderna, and also what we affectionately call the Pfizer Junior Vaccine, so that is for anyone ages 5 to 11. And then the regular visors, anyone ages 12 and up, Moderna's age 18 and up. Today is actually the official one-year anniversary from when we have started accepting and providing vaccinations through our itty-bitty clinic here. And I was just trying to get the official numbers together for what we have done in that one year here at our clinic. We've provided roughly 100 doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson. We are, we have exceeded 200 doses of the Moderna vaccine. Approximately 250 doses of the Pfizer Junior Vaccine, and over 4,000 doses of the regular Pfizer Vaccine. Last year, in total, through our public health clinic here with our small staff, we provided over 5,000 doses of vaccines by ourselves. And then we also partnered for a good portion of the year with Memorial Medical Center and the clinics throughout our community, including Essentia Health, North Lakes Community Clinic, and Schwammigan Clinic to provide the mass vaccination clinics at the fieldhouse. And with those clinics, there were a total of, it was just shy of 3,000 doses of vaccine provided up there as well, so that was 2,970 doses provided there. So vaccination efforts continue through many different community partners at this point in time. Between Ashland, Bayfield, Iron Price, and Sawyer Counties, there are now over 20 different locations to receive vaccines at. Which, it's been a group effort at this point in time. And then as far as case activity, I know everybody probably saw that Bayfield County had reported some, some pretty record numbers of cases for last week. They had 137 cases last week in total. So far this week for Ashland County, yesterday alone, we had 67 positive cases reported. That is the largest number of positive cases reported in one day that we have seen in, since, since the start of the pandemic. We are in an extreme surge right now. We are doing our best to contact everybody who has a positive result. However, with receiving 67 cases, we are overwhelmed. We are attempting to prioritize and we are contacting people as quick as we are and providing them with the best information that we can in a streamlined process compared to what we had done with a full interview. Previously, our conversations with positive individuals may have been, in some cases, you know, 20 minutes previously, and now we are trying to streamline that process so that we're able to contact more people. So at this point in time, we are asking everybody, if you have not been vaccinated, please consider being vaccinated. If you don't have a booster, please get a booster. If you are greater than five months since receiving your initial vaccination series, please get a booster. It makes a world difference, it reduces the length of the illness, it reduces the severity of the illness. It reduces the risk of severe side effects and adverse effects such that could lead to hospitalization and death. In Ashland County, we have lost, I believe we are at 30 individuals now that we have lost due to COVID-19 since the start of the pandemic. There, I mean, there's, that's three people that, that were lost that it could have been prevented. So with that, if you are sick, please stay home. With the new variant that is obviously here with the certain cases that we are experiencing, it is more of a milder illness in most cases, it is more, most people describe it as being more of a head cold, they have a mild sore throat, they have nasal congestion, they have a cough, they have sniffles. It's not the full-on pneumonia, body aches fever that people were previously experiencing. Obviously, that can still happen in some cases, but for the most part, it is a milder illness. So if you are experiencing symptoms, please stay home, if you are absolutely able to, please, please, please stay home. If you do have to go out for any reason, please wear a mask, please wear a well-fitting mask. If you only have a cloth mask, please wear two of them, if you are going to be in close proximity with somebody, or wear a surgical mask, or an N95, or KN95. It, it's not only protecting yourself from potentially other people, but it is also a source of source control as you are not putting any of your potential illness out into the environment. People are contagious two days prior to their symptom onset, so you might be walking around for two days not even knowing that you're sick, and you might be contributing to a super-spreader event. I do not mean to sound dramatic, I apologize if I'm sounding dramatic. But like I said, we had 67 positive cases reported in one day. That's a combination of what we're receiving from the hospital, from our clinics, from Northland College, from people calling in home tests, from Bad River Clinic, it's, I mean, everybody is reporting all at once, and I lost count at 67, so that, that about covers a update in a nutshell, did anybody have questions?
I have a question, this is Kathy Schutte. We're getting calls about where people can go to get a test to find out if they've got it, does the county provide a day where people can come in and get tested? Or, or should they buy it at a drugstore, a test?
We do not do testing here, we don't have the capacity for testing here because we are so, such a small staff and such a small clinic, we don't have the capacity to do testing here. Testing are available, you can contact your physician. Most of the clinics have the option for an e-visit where they will then refer you for testing either through the clinic themselves or refer you to Memorial Medical Center through their drive-through COVID testing, you do have to have an appointment arranged to be tested there.
Okay.
Walgreens has testing available where you can schedule online, or you can call and schedule and do a drive-through there. There are the over-the-counter tests that you can purchase. Right now, I'm understanding is most locations are out of stock, but once they are resupplied, they do have them. For anybody who has children at the Ashland School District, or they are a staff member of the Ashland School District or directly associated with the school district, the school district does have onsite testing for their staff and students and immediate family members. I believe the Mellon School District also has onsite testing. Schwammigan School District, which includes the Glynn Campus, does have some testing capabilities, but their testing site is located in Price County, so that would be a matter of traveling for those individuals.
Thank you very much for that great information.
Liz, this is Supervisor Quebec, could you tell me when the vaccination clinics is today? And then, is, is there like a regular time for it, where is it held? It's out of our office on Sandburn Avenue, it will be from 11:04, and the next one will be on February 1st. Thank you so much.
Liz, is there a place where people who are looking for better masks and N5 etc. can get some? Sometimes some of those things can be a little elusive or price prohibitive.
They're generally available, I've seen them at the dollar store, you can get like the disposable surgical masks, I've seen them for sale at the dollar store. Pretty much any location at this point in time, I've seen some, I've, I've seen some available at the hardware stores, L&amp;M, Walmart, Walgreens. Pretty much any place, almost.
Okay, thank you.
Liz, this is Doreen Hannanen. My question is, if you have received a booster, how long before you should receive another one?
We're still working on that information, we don't know that answer specifically yet. After the five to six months period from the initial series, the immunity does wane quite a bit for some individuals, and then after you receive that booster, it brings your immunity back up into roughly the 90th percentile for effectiveness against, like I said, severe illness or the, the worst-case scenario complications. We don't know how long that immunity is going to last yet because boosters are the new thing at this point in time, so that is part of an ongoing study, we don't have that information for sure yet.
Liz, this is Supervisor Frannick, I had a question also about, does your vaccine clinic cover the booster? And what if the person is not insured, can they come in and receive the booster?
There is no cost associated with the COVID-19 vaccination, it is free of charge, there is no administration fee. I know most of the clinics, I know, for example, Essentia Health, if you schedule an appointment to receive a vaccine through them, they are not charging. They have not been charging for vaccination clinics, so any pharmacy or any location that you go to, there is no charge associated with the COVID-19 vaccinations.
And, and also, when should somebody get tested for COVID-19? I mean, at what day of their symptoms have you found out that it's more, you know, more cohesive for them to get tested? Thank you.
We've seen people testing positive two days prior before their symptom onset. The most contagious time period is two days prior to symptom onset and within the first three days of having symptoms. So anytime in that window, I mean, obviously, you're not gonna know to get tested two days prior to starting symptoms, but anytime, once you develop symptoms, it would be generally fine to be tested.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Liz? Hearing none, thanks Liz for your report, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go on to the regular agenda. Number four, approval of December 14, 2021 County Board Minutes, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Rich Huber, seconded by Marty Vitek. All in favor, say aye.
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 Want to oppose, say no. Motion carries, thank you. Resolution RO1 2022 1407, establishing compensation to elected officials, Sheriff, Clerk of Court, and Coroner, Dan.
Yeah, every two years, well, well, every four years, the county board has to pass a resolution establishing the pay for the elected officials that are up in November of this year. So this year, the sheriff, the clerk of courts, and the coroner are up for, up for election. The, the resolution in front of you represents a 2% pay raise each year. So 2% from this year's pay raise and then 2% going forward. The reason why that number was established is because that's what employees were given as a 2% raise. So, so this does need to be passed before candidates have to file papers in April. So, does any questions?
This is Mike Burling, Commissioner. I'd like to share with the board that last week, the Finance Committee supported this.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the Resolution 1407 to do a 2% increase to elected officials.
Do we have a second?
I'll make that second.
We have a motion in a second on the table to adopt Resolution 1407, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, motion carries, thank you. I just wanna say a little bit about this resolution and this increase, if I may. This is absolutely no bearing on our current administrator because it was like this when he got here, but I think what we're paying our law enforcement people here is an embarrassment. If you look at around the state, we're probably the second lowest, I don't know if Iron County has a weight in us, they're probably below us, but I mean, there's 10, 10, $20,000 difference in top and bottom, and this is unacceptable, so hopefully, as we get squared away with our new administrator and research all the avenues to increase this wage scale. I think we absolutely have to do it, I'm pretty sure that most of the people here agree with me that we are not paying our law enforcement people nearly enough. So just consider that, thank you. Number six, 2022 Annual Work Plan for Forestry.
Okay, this is an annual resolution passed every year, it just details how much, what the forestry department's gonna be doing. You'll have their timber harvest and other work plans for this year. This resolution did pass the forestry committee.
And Dan, if I could just say something really quick. The two guys in the forestry office, Jerome and Matt, have been working very hard to get this plan up and ready to go. And it's a very detailed plan, and we approved it and passed it at the meeting. This is Lauren Agro, I'll make the motion to pass the 2022 Annual Work Plan for the Forestry.
We have a motion to pass the forestry plan, do we have a second?
Ron Stender will second.
Seconded by Ron Cinder, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, thank you. Number seven on the agenda, Resolution RO1 2022 1408, a resolution authorizing the county administrator to give the town of La Pointe 30 days' notice to terminate the existing law enforcement agreement, Dan.
Once, please. Okay, let me adjust the cameras for everybody, too. Okay, sorry about that. So this resolution came about because of a crisis we're facing in the jail right now. In the past month, a little over a month, we've had four people leave the jail, one of them we didn't know about a retirement. But we're getting at the point where we have a staffing crisis there. At the current moment, we, we're shipping out all of our female inmates to Douglas County because we don't have enough staff to, to keep them in our jail. Last bill was, I believe, about $10,000 for 20-ish days, that does not include healthcare costs. It does not include costs for our department to go pick up inmates to bring them back to court here and return them. So we're, we're facing a steep problem here. I will say this problem's not unique to Ashland County, it's happening all over the state. Corrections officers are hard to find for every county, they're hard to find for the state, too. State prisons have a huge shortage in correction office, officers. The only thing that has seemed to work around the state is to increase pay, to incentivize people to apply for the job and to stay at the job. So, you know, what we talked about the Finance Committee last week was increasing the pay for our corrections officer to stay competitive in the market to enable our jail to stay open and to enable us to not have to ship out our inmates and incur extra costs. The only base that we could find money available was in the contract with this town of La Pointe where we give them $135,000 a year for law enforcement. So this is a notice to end that agreement. However, in fairness, we asked the town of La Pointe to come here and state their, state their beliefs and desires and make their case, too, because so, I guess Sheriff Brennan, do you have anything to add about your situation in the jail? Could you go to our microphone, please?
I think you've pretty much summed up our situation at the jail. We should have 15 correctional officers, we're down to 12 at this point. We're down to 12 at this point. Yeah. We don't have enough female correctional officers in order to staff our, our jail. We cannot recruit people. We've had an opening application since September when we had known that we're gonna have one person leaving for retirement and two leaving otherwise. And we had two applications and we were unable to use those two people. We're not going to lower our standards just to put people in the chair. We're gonna continue to hire the best people we can to offer the best service that we can for the Ashland County, and to make sure that we have a safe environment for the inmates, which is one of the biggest responsibilities of the Sheriff's Department, and one of the highest liabilities that we have in the Sheriff's Department. Now, you're gonna be talking about the pay raise for the correctional officers. As like I said, that's a good start where you're at right now. There are $6.23 an hour less than a patrol officer. They still have as, the same responsibility, if not more, that a patrol officer has. Patrol officer deals with maybe 10% of the population that they're dealing with is of criminal nature. Our correctional officers have 100% of their population, and their, their citizens in the jail are criminal in nature. It's a highly dangerous area to work in. And with short staff, it makes even more hazardous for, for officers. So regardless if we have this one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars added into it or it goes back to, to the point. That's your call, but they need to be compensated and need to, need to be paid for what they're, what they're doing right now, for what their job they're doing. I tell you right now, I would not ever, I could never be a correctional officer. It's two separate, different entities and career paths. I could never do it. I've been in law enforcement for forty some years. I could not be a correctional officer. I give them a lot of respect for what they do and how they do it. I, we met with La Point yesterday briefly. I understand the predicament that we're in. I do not want to leave any, any citizen in Ashland County in a position where they can't get law enforcement in a, in a quick and expedient, timely fashion. So I don't know how this is going to pan out, but I just know that in the sheriff's private right now, our jail, we have all of our female off, all of our female inmates are being housed, house costing the county fifty-five dollars per person per day plus transportation costs and everything else. So it's a unique situation at this point.
Yeah, would you, gentlemen, like to speak?
So, good morning. I'm Michael Cook. I'm the town administrator for La Point. Mr. Chair Supervisors, thank you for giving us the time. Cut to the chase. No surprise to you, I imagine. I urge you to reject the termination of the contract. I urge you to keep the annual payment that is the core of that contract. I'm hoping we can get you to understand this morning that this one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars allows the town to cover your responsibilities. Under state law, you, the county, are required to protect people and property, not the town, you. And case law says that a county's law enforcement services must be quote legally adequate, unquote. Ashland County has gotten that legally adequate protection for the last twenty-five years by contracting with the town of La Point. And no wonder. Our partnership is common sense. It works. Works for the island residents and businesses, works for visitors, it works for the county. Contract means you do not have to dedicate staff, equipment and time to the island. You do not have to worry about the very real challenges of getting to the island. Our contract is one of the best deals the county has. For minimal cost, minimal cost. You provide coverage for residents and businesses who provide twenty-three percent of your property tax levy. For minimal cost, you provide coverage to a town that in summer becomes the county's second largest municipality. Now, on short notice, you are thinking about a unilateral decision with no consultation to destroy something that works. You approved the one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in your budget, so we put the payment in our budget. Now, less than two weeks into the year, you are reneging on the deal. You are telling us your word is useless, that we can't trust you. Look, I'm not blind to the serious problems you face with your jail. But terminating our contract does not solve that problem. It only creates another problem. You are destroying something that works. Terminating this contract is one of the most short sighted decisions you can make. Some nitty gritty. If your one hundred and thirty five thousand dollar payment disappears, the town can afford only two full-time officers plus some part-time help in the summer. Those officers can cover only eighty hours a week. That means the county will be responsible for the remaining eighty-eight hours. As the sheriff said, our police chief and I met yesterday with him and with your administrator. We tried to get some answers as to how you intend to provide coverage. The simple truth is you do not have a credible plan. You have no sense of how much more this will cost the county in the long run, what it will cost you in time and money and credibility. The sheriff does not intend to station a deputy on the island. It's not clear that he could even if he wanted to. He does not even intend to park a squad on the island. All he can basically tell us is that he will stretch his existing staff even thinner. Those are my words. And he will respond as appropriate. His words. Here's the reality. In a best case scenario, it takes a squad an hour to reach the island by road and ferry. There is no plan for how a deputy will respond at night when the ferry stops running. There's no plan for the hundreds of dollars it will cost you every time you need a special ferry run in an emergency. There's no plan for a few weeks from now when ice prevents the ferry from running at all. Then deputies will have to rely on wind sleds, which carry only people, not vehicles. After yesterday's meeting, I have no confidence that the county is able to fulfill its statutory responsibilities for law enforcement. And so what happens when the county can't respond in time to a domestic assault? Or when our EMTs can't provide medical care because the scene is not safe for them and no deputy is available to make it safe? What happens when the lone deputy on a shift is on the island, leaving the entire northern half of the county without coverage? That means all of you, all of your communities get worse coverage as well. I have no confidence that the county has thought about the fallout of failing to fulfill one of its fundamental legal responsibilities. I can't believe you want this hanging over your heads. Please, for your sake and for ours, don't be this short sighted. You are not prepared for the consequences of this idea. Please reject it. Keep our contract and our partnership in place. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Glenn Carlson and I'm the town chair of the town of La Point. Thank you for inviting us to speak with you today. You've heard from our town administrator. He has done an excellent job of explaining the situation. I think there's no question that the county is responsible for protecting life and property throughout the county, and that includes the town of La Point, which, as he pointed out, provides twenty-three percent of your tax levy. That is probably one of the biggest benefits, frankly, that the town of La Point gets back out of the two million dollars in property taxes it sends over here every year. So I would just encourage you, my town board is meeting tonight. They indications are not happy. They are, in fact, some of them are talking about just walking away, shutting down our police department altogether and just dumping the entire thing back on the county's lap. So I do encourage you to give this a great deal of thought. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Dan, you got anything to say?
Yeah, no, we spoke, I'd ask Mick to join me on this. We did speak to the mystery sheriff Brennan to give them an outline of how he would provide police protection. I want to play, while your best case scenario is an hour, I guess, I want to point out that many of the towns in the southern part of the county and the western part of the county have the same dilemma. I mean, if there's a patrol officer on one part of the county, it's going to take them an hour to get to another part of the county to respond. If there's an incident up here in Ashland and all the deputies are up here, it's going to take them over an hour to get down south. It's, that's just the nature of our, our sheriff's department. We don't have as many deputies as we'd like in the counties large geographically. There is, there's going to be wait times almost anywhere in the county, except for maybe the city of Ashland and the city of Mellon during the day. That's just the reality. The decision whether or not you're going to have a police department is really up to the town. We don't have a say in that matter. You guys can make that own decision in consultation with your own constituents and your own taxpayers. All we're asking for here is the county to take care of our needs here. And that is to take care of our, our correctional officers, to be able to have a full staff there, to be able to be competitive. And to be honest, a full staff at the jail does benefit everybody in the county, including the town of La Point. They are going to need a place to send people on the island who get unruly. And if we can't accept them because our jail is full or because of COVID protocols and limiting capacity, or because we simply don't have the jailers to accept them, that becomes their problem too. And that is a real issue. I mean, people who are picked up for minor offenses are not admitted to the jail now. They have to be violent offenders. And that's not everybody who's picked up. It does become a real issue for everyone, for the entire county, including the town of La Point. So
Eleven of the twenty-one supervisors live in the city of Ashland and as Ashland residents, we pay taxes that go to a police department. I spent some time on the city council and I asked the police chief once, why do we pay for a police department when we have the sheriff department right here with, you know, the buildings within the city limits? And the answer to that was, was a higher level of service. So even though we have the sheriff right here, we pay significant taxes for a higher level of service. I guess, you know, I, I agree with the comments that the administrator made, you know, when you're out of this neck of the woods, you know, down county, it's, it's a longer wait. I grew up in Bayfield County and I know what that hour looks like when, you know, when the deputies are a long ways away. So I want to ask the sheriff, why do, does the city of Ashland pay for a police department? Why does Mellon do that? And what would happen if we chose not to have some level of service?
Well, the city of Ashland, I believe, is obligated by statute because of the size of the population, they have to have a police department. Plus, the citizens of Ashland have grown to a response time that they want to have a police officer there within minutes. If Mellon Police Department has their own department, they're on mostly during the day. Sometimes they work like from maybe seven AM to eleven PM. We answer the calls for service after that. We answer the calls anywhere in the county. We have three districts that I have assigned, so we have response times that are quicker for our, for our citizens. We have a south and a north and Bad River. Bad River provides law enforcement. They pay for, for deputies. They pay complete wages, training, equipment, total. And we have officers there twenty-four seven to respond to their calls. So if I was trying to explain to, to, you know, the point, Manon Island yesterday is that we'll still respond to their calls for service and we will put somebody on the island when we had the manpower to be able to do that. But it's not going to be all the time and it's not going to be twenty-four seven. So if there is a call for service there, we'll respond to that call for service. It may take up to two hours, as Mike pointed out yesterday. That's the reality. It, it's not ideal for anybody. I would not want to be a person on the island in a domestic situation calling for help and have to wait two hours for it to happen. I would not want that. But at that same point, if I lived on Manon Island, I would say to Mike Town Board, we need to keep our police department. We need to pay for services here that we can't get above and beyond the county, just like the city of Ashland does and the city of Mellon does. Bad River used to have their own police department and they had a big turnover because of the not being Wisconsin retirement system. So in two thousand and fifteen, they contracted with us and it's been a very good agreement between the two. So it's not that we won't respond. It's just that it'll take a while for them to get there. So if they're okay with that type of response, a delay in response, that's their decision. We will still provide service to them. It's just going to take time.
Yeah. So the reality is over half the residents in Ashland are paying for some level of law enforcement besides what they pay for through the county taxes. And there are certainly residents, especially down county, that have long waits just because of where they're located and, you know, lack of population. So what you're experiencing on the island, on the one hand, I'm very sympathetic to you, but on the other hand, when I look at the big picture on this issue, you know, other people are paying for law enforcement and other people have those long wait times. And I remember, you know, being in rural Bayfield County where I grew up, you know, some rather long wait times. So I understand that, but at the same time, as we look at the budget, our ARPA funding is limited. We've got so, I'm on the finance committee. We've got so many issues that this county is going to have to address in the coming years. And I wish I could find some easy answers to it. You know, eight years on the city council budgets there, I taught math for a living. I go through this stuff looking for where can we do something better and find, you know, something to save and whatever. And not only aren't there any easy answers, I think in not very many years, all of this is going to get a lot more challenging. I do support what the administrator is proposing, but I also hope that if this goes forward, that we find ways of, you know, working together or tweaking some things, you know, and looking, you know, for some things that would make it better than otherwise, so that, you know, overall things do work well, but I don't have the answers to that. It's not my area of expertise, but I think, you know, I'm certainly open to more discussion if we could, you know, figure some things out, but given our jail staff and our budgets, you know, we're, as the administrator said, we're moving people out of county. We've got staff time in that. We've got costs. We pay another county. I taught for a living at, you know, mostly WITC. Had one student that wanted to be jail staff. It's not a career people aspire to for lots of reasons. So we are, you know, hemorrhaging money with that situation and we've got to address it.
Yeah, I guess I, we obviously have a dilemma with our jail staffing and, and I think that's a perfect storm with everything going on and unfortunately, they've been underpaid for many years and we do need to do something there. And I, I think that's actually, to me, a separate issue from what we're doing here with the, the town of La Point. You know, in all fairness, we sat here a month ago and passed a budget and there was no indication of this at all being a problem. All of a sudden, a month later, we want to tell them, sorry, we're, we're, you know, shutting the door on you and that's that. I don't think that's fair. And if it were me the other way around, I'd be upset about it too and I'd be sitting right there with you. So, I mean, I get it. It, it doesn't seem like, you know, we've exhausted all avenues here and, and I've spoke with Dan earlier this week and expressed, I hope we can find some fairness in this issue. And with that said, I'm not concerned about, you know, what do we do, but we need to do something and we need to have some more discussion on this and I, I'm not ready to vote today to eliminate the, the funding that has been committed for La Point for, for this year. I think we need some more discussion on this matter and, you know, if you, you're asking today, how would we, how we should vote? I, I can tell you that I'm not in support of, you know, pulling this rug off from underneath them. I'm at the beginning of the budget year. We should have had some indication that that was a possibility. We didn't do that. So let's back up, take a breath and sit down at the tables and, and start having a discussion about this before we do anything.
Just, just a point of order. Should we have a motion on the floor before we continue discussion on this matter?
A motion to approve?
A motion one way or the other?
I'll make a motion.
Who is it? Kathy?
This is Billamina. I'll make a motion to table. I, I'm in agreement with Matt.
I'll second that motion to table.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the, on the floor to table this. Just a brief statement I'd like to say about this. I, I think that Matt, once again, I agree with you. Mark it down. I think that this should be forwarded to the executive committee to find out exactly what the devil is going on and what we can do about it and have the sheriff's department sit in on it. We have to, we have to research all angles of this and, and come up with a decision that's going to not adversely affect too many people. And I, I really believe that, that we should schedule this to the executive committee. And you guys said you have a board meeting tonight. And find out what transpired at that meeting, what you can come up with and I, I think we, we will discuss this. I, I think we, we will discuss this further later. Now, we have a motion on the table to table this. Are we ready to vote on that?
Chairman, could I, could I just address the body for one, a very quick point?
Go ahead.
So, you know, I did want to, I did want to point out, you know, something that county administrator Grady said, he said that most of the people who are in the jail are there because of violence. And my understanding is that most people are there because of nonviolent drug offenses. And that's really sort of the crux of the issue is, is that we continue in this state to criminalize people consuming certain substances, including marijuana. And I am not in favor of taking, you know, you know, making these, making rash decisions about the safety of a particular community without doing a full analysis of the implications, the budgetary implications, how they're going to be addressing public safety, especially in a very short time period. Certainly, there's, there's, you know, there's, there's other communities that have a very long wait period. But the town of La Pointe hasn't had that. And, you know, and, and we need to, when we're making decisions on a governmental basis, use good processes. And so that's why I think we need to hold back, give this a little more time, more thought, more input. Thank you.
Chair, this is Pat. We have a motion and a second to table, and I believe a motion to table, we need to end debate and vote. Is that correct?
What's your question?
We have a motion and a second to table, and a motion to table isn't subject to debate, we need to vote.
That's true.
Okay, let's vote on this. All those in favor of tabling? Eight and nine? Roll call vote please, yes.
This is to table resolution R01 2022 1408. Franek.
Yes.
Pufal.
Yes.
Stendor.
Yes.
Berlin.
Yes.
Corpola.
Yes.
Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Henanen.
Yes.
Shudy.
Yes.
Murdig.
Yes.
Negro.
No.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Quebec.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Kenny.
No.
Thirteen yes, two no.
Okay, thank you.
So in light of vote, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that a motion be made to table the next two items. Since there is no funding mechanism in place, the next two items should be tabled also.
I'll make that motion that we tabled the next two items.
This is Doreen Henanen, I'll second that motion.
Could we handle those individually? I'd, I'd like to see the third one still beyond the agenda.
Does somebody want to amend their motion?
I'd amend the motion that the pay issue for correctional officers stay on the table so that we can discuss it.
Didn't we just say with the last motion that once there's the table, that we have to continue on?
Yes.
Please use your mics, guys.
I was hoping just to split this so that we could vote on them separately.
Kathy, did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
If you want to amend your motion, you can. Otherwise, we have to go straight to voting.
I, I'm, I'll leave my motion the way it was.
Let's take a vote.
One, one thing here, when we voted to table the vote on seven and eight, I thought that took care of seven and eight. Do we have a motion for eight? Eight and nine together? Question about that. Was that pay increase for correctional officers, was that in the budget or not?
No, the, the increase was not in the budget. So item number seven was the funding mechanism for the pay increase. Since that is tabled, we don't have a funding mechanism.
We're supposed to vote.
Wait a minute.
Chairman Pufal?
Yes, administrator was speaking.
Okay, I couldn't hear him.
Hey, no, he's asking a point of order. Because the, the number nine was not in the budget. So the funding mechanism for number nine was item number seven. Since that was tabled, there is no funding mechanism for number nine. So that's why I believe the intent of the motion was to table both eight and nine.
We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Correct.
Motion was by Matt?
Kathy Shudy.
Kathy Shudy made a motion. And Doreen Henanen seconded. All those in favor say aye of tabling eight and nine.
No.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
No.
Would you count? Three? Pardon? I can't hear when you whisper.
Mr. Chairman, why don't you ask for, make it a roll call vote, since the vote wasn't clear?
Yes, Marty.
Can you guys use your mics, please?
Motion is to table items eight and nine together. Motion by Kathy Shudy, second by Doreen Henanen.
A yes is to table, a no is not to table.
Do you want a roll call vote? Okay.
Pufal.
Yes.
Stendor.
Yes.
Berlin.
Yes.
Corpola.
Yes.
Vtech.
No.
Huber.
Yes.
Henanen.
Yes.
Shudy.
Yes.
Murdig.
Yes.
Negro.
Yes.
McKenzie.
No.
Quebec.
Yes.
Campbell.
No.
Kenny.
No.
Franek.
Yeah.
Eleven yes, four no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, both, all three of these items will come up at the executive committee.
Correct.
All right, we'll go on to F on the agenda, county administrator updates.
Well, I said the news, Chair, everyone. Last week, the Treasury Department issued their final rules for ARPA funding. And in those rules, it says, any amount up to $10 million can be claimed as lost revenue. Since we didn't even get $10 million, we get to claim all of our money as lost revenue. So consider the money officially spent, it'll be going into our bank account. We'll take it up to the county board at the next meeting to approve that. But that is the plan, to stick it into savings, to hold on to in case we need it. So that's the good news. Second news. Yesterday, in the, in the PRL case, I don't know if everybody remembers that. That's the case with the, where the officer unfortunately had to shoot a young man back in 2017. The judge issued summary judgment in favor of the county. That means that the case will not be forwarded as dismissed. The plaintiff does have until February 7th or so, or 9th to appeal. So it's not officially over, but that, that's where we stand on that. And then today, yesterday, I, I appointed Matt Schultz as Acting Forestry Administrator. Chris Hoffman's been ill, and I don't know when he's going to come back at full time, full speed. So in the meantime, they need somebody down in forestry and to be able to make decisions, to be able to move forward with, for the department's plans. So, and then Matt will be act, acting as administrator until we hear, hear more about Chris coming back. So that's what I got.
Dan, a question for you, is there any way that that money can be used to supplement what we just voted? For the increases?
Yes, we could use the ARPA fundings to pay the correctional officers for this year. That, that does however, create an $80,000 gap for next year. So we create a deficit for next year by doing that. But yes, it's possible because you, if this board so desires, they could use the ARPA funding to cover this year's costs. We did, and just so everybody knows, it, we, it costs roughly $40,000 for every dollar an hour we raise, the correctional officers pay, all of them. So that's including benefits and retirement and all that stuff, taxes. So yeah, that's a possibility.
How much does it cost, would it cost us a year?
It would cost us $40,000 a year per dollar an hour. So a $2 an hour raise would be $80,000 a year.
Oh.
So, so if you want to use, but that's to your question, yes, ARPA funding could be used for this year's money.
Well, I understand it's a one-time fix.
Yeah.
Still have to face the problem.
Yep. So we can bring that, but we can discuss that at the executive committee.
Okay, thank you. Is that all you have, Dan?
Sir.
County Board Supervisor reports, Matt.
Yeah, I guess what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see an item on the finance agenda to discuss the pay issue for the correctional officers. I think it's fine that it's going to go to executive, but ultimately, finance needs to figure out where we're going to get this money. It's not a matter of, of do we do this, it's a matter of how we do this. And the sooner we can get finance started on that, and that was my motion to split those two, was to get the one to finance, to figure this out. We got to figure out how we're going to, you know, keep our corrections officers, and it, obviously, a part of that's going to be a pay incentive, it may be some other benefits. But I would like to see something put immediately on the next finance committee agenda to start sorting that out, in that that's where those decisions should be made.
Oh, I will be talking to Chairman Pufal and Chairman Berlin about setting up how they, how they want to set up the schedule.
Yeah, we had a finance meeting last week, we discussed the jail staff. We've had someone from jail staff, not only at finance meeting, but I believe at quite a few board meetings for some time, speaking to the pay issues there and the implications for staffing. At the finance meeting, we did discuss the cost the county is incurring by not having sufficient jail staff. And I would encourage the administrator to work with jail staff to put a report together that addresses all of those costs. It's not just the cost that we pay other counties, but it's the transportation cost, you know, the use of our vehicles, the staff time that we spend, if some of that is overtime, medical costs, insurance, et cetera. And that, those costs are not budgeted right now, and so we need to look at the budget that we just passed. And, you know, if we're going to make adjustments there, one was proposed today. But are there other ways of doing that? We know that we have some ARPA Monday for the moment, but as administrator just said, if we pull $80,000 out of the ARPA money, that leaves a gap for next time, and we all know the ARPA money is, is limited. So we don't have a long-term place in the budget yet, so we will need to continue to look at where we would find that.
Any more comments?
I could say something. This is Supervisor Negro.
Go ahead, Laura.
You know, as, as we go through each one of these pieces, we need to remember that we are trying to correct quite a long time of not having raises and not having the fiscal ability to do our taxing laws to increase for the expenses that we have. My concern comes when we talk about the ARPA money, and I, I get we can defederalize it all now, which is great, and I love Dan's plan of socking it away to, for an emergency, because we can't spend the ARPA money like we're lottery winners, because we know what happens to lottery winners. They end up filing bankruptcy. We're going to have to make some hard decisions. And it might be things that do affect some of the services that we provide. We only have so much reach, we only have so much checkbook. I, I get that that contract with the town of La Pointe isn't ideal. But we need to start looking at innovations inside our departments, things we may not have thought about before, cooperation with the city, maybe not duplicating some services if we can possibly not do that. And we need to streamline what we're doing. So as we go through all of this, I'd like everybody to keep in mind those things. We need to correct a long time of not doing things. So I, I'm still in support of what we, we put forth today. And hopefully, this will create a better conversation in all of the departments about making things better, easier, cheaper as we can. And, and I know you guys all in the departments try, but there, there may be need for bigger changes yet. Thank you.
Any more comments? In light of what Laura said, this problem didn't appear overnight. Been on this board for a long time, so has Matt and Clarence, and, and this never was addressed properly before. That's why we're in the jackpot we're in now, so it's not going to be fixed overnight either. But I'm sure that Dan is going to explore all the possibilities to try to get us on the even keel here. And hopefully, 2022 will be a better year. It can't get a hell of a lot worse. So I'm looking forward to what we can do with this budget and, and where we can find money, how we can produce money, whatever, if we have to print our own. That was a joke. Okay, that's all I got to say, anybody else? Comments? Don't forget to drop off your vouchers. One more motion. Mike. Moisture and Burn adjourned by Mike. Second is by Marty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.